Good evening, I call this planning commission uh meeting to order at six thirty one P M. Go call please.
Uh Commissioner Tarazas Baxter.
Present.
Commissioner Rivera. Present and Chairperson Harvey.
Present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Vice Chair Rivera, would you lead us please?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Chairperson, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you. Item B one, public appearances matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Does anybody have any any matters not appearing on the agenda that they'd like to come forth and speak about? No, okay. Continuing on uh to item C, the consent calendar. Consent agenda.
Yes, madam chairperson, you have one item on your consent agenda related to approval of minutes?
Yes.
Uh and so if indeed that that is a desire of the commission to approve the minutes, then a motion would be in order.
After review of the the minutes, I would like to request a change to page two of the minutes on item D one. Uh reorganization reorganization of planning commission. Uh to revise where it says Commissioner Rivera to serve as chairperson. And change that to Commissioner Rivera to serve as vice chairperson.
I'll make a motion to approve consent uh with that amendment to the minutes to the minutes.
So connect.
Go call.
Prompting.
Oh. Commissioner Tarazas Baxter.
Yes.
Uh Vice Chairperson Rivera?
Yes.
Chairperson Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Moving on, item D, special presentation. S B thirteen eighty three statewide mandatory organic waste collection presentation. Hi.
Hello. Evening, commis- um community development staff is here to present S B thirteen eighty three. My name is Ivan Cordero, I'm a city planner and we have David Ramirez, he's our code enforcement officer. Um directly working with this mandate is Ariel Flores. Um she's our new organic waste monitor. She could not be with us tonight. Um so S B thirteen eighty three, the state of California adopted Senate Bill thirteen eighty three three statewide mandatory organic waste collection to divert organic waste from our landfills as they've concluded that about forty percent of what we discard in landfill is organic waste. Effective January first of tw- twenty twenty two, S B thirteen eighty three established statewide greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. So when our organic material decom- decomposes in our landfill, it produces greenhouse gases. S B thirteen eighty three's goal is to reduce the amount of organic material disposed in landfills by seventy five percent by the year of twenty twenty five compared to twenty fourteen levels. By composting organic materials, greenhouse gas production significantly reduces S B thirteen eighty three. Uh reduces period. S B thirteen eighty three also established a goal to divert twenty percent of the edible food currently disposed in landfills. By composting organic materials and recovering edible food, we can all do our part to slow climate change. Um these photos are example of examples of the organic waste that can be diverted from our landfills and recovered for human consumption with organic recovery programs such as S B thirteen eighty three. On the left, we have a perfectly grouped produce uh that previously was sent to the landfills. Um now they're required to be sent to um organizations such as the IV Food Bank. And on the right, we have a composting pile. As you can see, there's organic waste mixed in with the yard waste and the soil um to make compost. So who is impacted? We're all impacted. All persons and entities that generate organic materials will be impacted. Everyone is required to divert their organic materials from their landfill trash by separating them and placing them in the organics container, which is also the yard waste container. In addition, certain entities that provide food will be required to donate any excess food to agencies, as I mentioned, like the Food Bank for Human Consta- Consumption. Residents, um those living in single family homes and multifamily apartment complexes um are required to divert their organic waste. Um commercial entities, businesses, for profit and nonprofit organizations, government offices and agencies and industrial facilities also um are mandated to divert all their organic waste. Education agencies and non-local entities such as schools, community colleges and universities. Um the requirements, requirements for residents will have to um residents will have to properly separate the recycling and organics from their garbage and have regular curbside collection services. Commercial businesses are also required to subscribe to the organics collection service, donate the maximum amount of excess edible food, provide annual educational information to tenants and staff, periodically inspect containers and inform employees of any contamination. Education agencies and non local entities are required to subscribe to the agent to the organics collection service as well. Provide organics collection containers, periodically inspect the recycling and organics containers for contamination and provide information and education to employees on how to prevent the generation of organic materials. Um waivers were were available for our commercial businesses. Non-local entities and education agencies were also exempted from some or all of the requirements if they provided documentation or evidence to support that minimal organic material is generated onsite or if they had physical space constraints. The city of Imperial along with Republic Services identified eighty two commercial businesses and two multifamily complexes within the city that were granted a de minimis waiver to comply with the mandate. They were exempt from from participating. Okay, so what is staff doing? The city ratified ordinance eight one two on January five, twenty twenty two to establish the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction program within the city. The city has also entered into a joint powers agreement with IV R M A to jointly implement programs and deliver recycling services and education within Imperial County. As a member of of the I R I V R M A Technical Advisory Committee, the city has assisted in purchasing a reporting software to submit regional reports to CalRecycle that will quantify our compliance and progress. We have also procured a capacity planning consultant to formulate a regional capacity plan that will estimate organic waste disposal and the amount of new or expanded capacity that will be needed for our region. In twenty twenty two, the Community Development Department applied for and was awarded approximately thirty thousand dollars in CalRecycle grant funds for education, outreach and enforcement. With those funds, we purchased two tablets for field inspections and onsite reporting, two desk scanners, safety equipment and six hundred compost pills and compostable liners that our department has been distributing at city events and at our office. We have formulated a let's talk trash campaign to educate residents of the mandate and prepare them for January twenty twenty four when staff and Republic Services will be actively monitoring residential organic waste containers. The campaign is being distributed via email to all accounts that have registered their email address with the city on the city's website and on all our social media prof platforms. David, our code enforcement officer and Ariel, our newly hired organic waste monitor, will be issuing courtesy notices, educating residents and commercial businesses and eventually start issuing citations for non-compliant residents. It is not the city's intention to fine our residents or commercial businesses, but to educate and meet the mandate's goals. Um here we have photos of um me and um Republic Services, her name is Sylvia, we um we participate in city events handing out our compost pills. Uh the middle photo is a example of what we are distributing to our residents via social media and email. And the photo on the right um is a field trip that Tony from our parks um department and I took to report the Republic Services composting facility. As you can see, there's a lot of contamination in those piles and those piles have been been deemed unusable because of the plastics. Plastics are not allowed. Um another facet of this bill is procurement. Uh cities and counties are required to procure products for use or give away of recovered organic waste products to meet our annual procurement target based on population. The city of Imperial's twenty twenty one population estimate of twenty thousand two hundred and eighty nine requires us to procure one thousand six hundred and twenty three tons of recover recovered organic waste products. This can include mulch, compost, renewable gas from anaerobic digestion or from biomass conversion. Um just as an example, in twenty twenty two, our parks department purchased twenty two point two two cubic yards of compost for our city parks, uh which is not even close to what we need to be.
Not near a thousand.
No. Yes, we have tons to go. What our department is doing to assist in meeting our procurement target is including um in the conditions of approval for our projects to include um mulch and compost in our all our developments. And in doing so, that will help us, they they need to purchase from a certified CalRecycle facility um in the name of the city of Imperial for it to count towards our procurement target.
Question, I'm gonna.
Sure.
Question is dealing with a compost matter, is it only uh from uh what is supposed to be put to the side as far as um fruits, vegetables, uh clippings, whatever that goes in the green trash can? Or um can you substitute to get credit for the city of Imperial manure compost?
Would be organics, um manure is not considered um to be.
Okay, because the state has a healthy soils program and farmers down here participate in it. So like I was just thinking maybe a farmer could get, he's gonna buy it anyway under that program and give you guys the credit.
Yes, that is the intention. Um hopefully our local farmers will be purchasing compost um and giving us the credit. Uh but I'm not sure it would uh be manure compost would.
Yeah, that's what they're using under healthy soils down here. They get it from the feedlots that are analyzed to meet a certain level and um but they're not organic, you know, they're turned and everything to meet the state's requirement in that healthy soils program.
A recycle is requiring us to um requiring whoever purchases compost to purchase from us CalRecycle certified.
These are from Cal.
Okay.
CalRecycle, they have to have a certification.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just telling you that that's something to look into, that you could just have a farmer say, okay, I'll give you guys the credit.
Right, so when it that it is actually enforced, then um yeah, we will be reaching out.
We'll research that, I know exactly what you're saying, yeah, yeah, to determine whether or not they can get credit.
Right, yeah.
So this concludes my portion, uh we have David who will um talk about his enforcement.
Can I, I still have a few questions, enforcement, when are you guys gonna start? Going and searching out green trash cans, black trash cans? I'm sorry?
It would be in my next slides.
Okay, and notices and invoices, I I didn't hear you say you're including that, you're on social media, you're on um the website. How about it being included in the invoices that go out on the bill?
Did uh do a bill insertion, however, um it proved to be very expensive, so we opted for email email distribution. Well, um this is why our enforcement division will be going out educating our residents.
The notice on their.
True. That's a good idea.
Good idea.
Yes. Either way, eventually they will hear from enforcement. Um they will just uh give them a courtesy notice.
On the door.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the S B thirteen eighty three enforcement. In September twenty twenty three, the city of Imperial hired Ariel Flores our part-time organic waste monitor. Her purpose is to focus on organic waste monitoring, education and enforcement. Code enforcement division will determine if violations have occurred, implement enforcement actions and determine if compliance standards are met in accordance with ordinance eight twelve. That is a picture of our organic monitor checking one of our local businesses' organic uh container. Education period started January first, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Businesses notifications began June, June, twenty twenty two and enforcement began September of twenty twenty three. Residents notifications began March, twenty twenty two and enforcement will begin January, twenty twenty four. Civil penalties for non-compliance will begin July first of twenty twenty four. First violation, written warning, second violation, a hundred to two hundred dollars per violation. Third and subsequent violations, two fifty to five hundred per violation.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
Are those um the same for both residential and commercial?
Yes.
They they're the same?
They're same.
Okay.
And that will conclude our presentation, uh.
Procuring organic material, who's paying for that? Where is it in the budget, through fines they're gonna support it, like the ticket writers on the road? Jack in a box?
Burden is a place on the city for the costs of procuring either compost or any type of organic. Uh well, they haven't started enforcing that, so we have yet to um determine where those funds will be coming from. I I'm.
The budget process, when's the budget gonna happen?
Um our our budget schedule started in is currently planned to start in in January. I I gather, my sense of this is that it it's a it's a work in in progress. I I as I understand uh uh the responsibility of the of businesses that are not exempt and residences is basically to separate things. And then our our hauler is gonna be responsible for compiling all this. As I as I was listening to the presentation, I there are some uh obvious things that come to my mind. Uh I you know, the they mentioned Food Bank as being one potential place where edible food could be taken. That that I would think there's a huge cost associated with collecting it. So if everybody takes their edible food to the food bank, somebody has to unload it, sort it, separate it, store it a- and and package it in a way that uh it can be distributed. So uh and all of uh and that, I I know very early on in the process uh the uh executive director of the food bank expressed concern about their ability to manage that without hiring a lot of additional staff and having a lot of additional costs. So I thi- I think the concern from our staff is to make sure that people are 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 doing the proper separation. Uh and then and then it falls to our uh uh at this point Republic is our is our waste hauler to collect it a- and and management. All that comes at a cost, as you'll recall, the city has already implemented oh one one part of of the of the recycling effort. And I think, was that strictly the commercial, the forty five? That was just for the commercial, right? And so at this point, we have, we haven't had any increase to residential, right? And and I know there's discussion amongst the cities about whether that process is requiring the two eighteen, right? We have noticed a hearing and then a protest. Uh to the extent that it's mandated by law, it it may not, we may not have to go through that. But query, what happens if we do go through that process and there's a majority protest? Uh then you can't implement the fee, CalRecycle probably isn't gonna be too sympathetic if we say, well, the citizens didn't approve the fee, so we can't do it. I don't, I don't think that'll get us very far. Uh so the there's there's some distance between where we sit today and and what the goals of the law are. I know CalCities, which is kind of the uh uh statewide organization of of cities, they they uh there was an effort uh by CalCities on the on behalf of cities to get a more realistic schedule associated with all of this. And and it was basically, they got zero traction with the state in terms of trying to come up with a uh more, what we think is gonna be a more realistic schedule. Because there's a lot of moving parts to this. It seems to me that even if the citizens do what they're supposed to do in separating things, what happens to it after that? Is is a completely separate discussion and where it ends up, right? If if Food Bank turns out to be the only place, I can't imagine how much of product seven cities in the unincorporated area are gonna generate. So I think it's it could be a huge undertaking uh for some but for some entity like the food bank. You should.
So so you're saying that we separate our our food in our house into the green trash can instead of throwing it in the black trash can? Do that, you're saying that that they're gonna put that to the food bank?
No, no, I think basically what you're talking about in terms of the actual food is more like, yeah, like Vons grocery stores.
Okay, so then the next point is, are they saying that the food, like the scraps, you know, you peel your potatoes, uh there's no location to dump that anymore?
Green trash can.
Green trash can, there's no longer a place for green trash can?
Yes.
No, I'm saying for it to be, uh you're saying that the question was where is the location for this recycled material, which is the green trash can? Is there no longer a place to dump it?
Basically, it's it, there's gonna be, there's gonna be three places, you're gonna have your trash.
No, I'm talking about when they come and pick it up.
Right, there's gonna be, you're gonna have, I don't know if you've noticed at our market days, we've been distributing a little organic and so that that will be collected as well.
Wouldn't you just dump it into the green trash can?
So.
We gotta put that little can on the curb also.
Yeah, I'm not su- I'm not sure about.
You do, you do, uh you put it, you deposit it into your yard waste, which is the green uh container.
Okay.
And it mixes in and then it's taken to, as you can see in the picture, to Copper Mountain in in Arizona to be composted.
Okay, got it, okay, that goes.
No.
The city has.
No.
Uh so what the residences and commercial businesses provide and is hauled eventually, that doesn't go towards the tonnage that you're required to procure?
Required to compost, to send this to composting. In addition, we need to procure.
It's gonna raise our rates, bottom line.
Unfortunately, um.
It's gonna raise our rates so we can create more government people to run around, so we can say we got low unemployment.
Um question, just so I can kind of understand this, since this is coming around in a couple of months and I know it's something new, so there's always a lot of kinks and nothing's perfect, perfect upfront. Um but for the enforcement part on like the residential side, just because I'm trying to think ahead of like residents coming forward and asking questions, who physically is gonna be checking that? Your organic monitor, and would that person be just going out on the days like when the the trash bins are pulled out in front of the house and then opening them up and physically checking them?
That is correct.
Okay. And then and obviously he or she will be dressed in city attire, so we'll know it's not just someone going through the trash. Okay.
It's a new um mandate.
Yeah.
To all jurisdictions, it's not perfect and we're just doing our part.
You guys are just carrying out because you're trying, trying to have the city not get a ticket.
Yes.
Top down.
Any other questions?
Um, okay, so January, Dennis, you guys start the budget process and you're gonna have to have to budget a line item in order to buy one ton or is it ten, a thousand tons?
Thousand six hundred and forty three.
Sixteen sixteen hundred tons of compost. So it'll take away from Parks other programs, yeah. Cause then you gotta figure out how to get rid of it, right? You get to buy it, but then you gotta get rid of it.
A lot of cities are giving it away to residents.
Okay.
And the the numbers are being looked at, um jurisdictions have complained that the amount they we need to procure is exorbitant, so hopefully they they'll lower the the requirement.
Ramping up.
Correct. There's no further questions, I s- I have compost bins, if anyone would like to take one.
Is a I.
Even.
Yes.
Us at another.
Last year sometime, yes.
Uh I think the the poignant questions are necessarily directed at you or the staff, it's just the frustrations a- and this is just, I assume, just the tip of the iceberg, everybody was laugh, was was smiling and laughing about the the little compost pills uh that you guys been giving over the last year and a half. Um but as we see it about to take into effect and and your staff coming out to check the trash cans, um I think the the reality of it uh is.
Uh I think the the reality of it uh is about to kick in and then eventually um here shortly down the line. Um the increase in the fees. Um as for, you know, sending this this food to the um to the food bank, I mean, we we. I don't know if we've considered, you know, the quality of what we would be, what we would be taking down there. Uh the expiration, how long has it already been sitting, um contamination, all these things that now the the food bank is gonna have to take into consideration. You know, and then depending on the quantities, again, it's it's neither here or there at this point, at this juncture. But it just creates more problems, uh and that's just for the food bank. Um and for the folks at home is getting them, I mean, I know. I'm sure the the city staff could go on any day and just check the the green can right now as is, the black can and the blue can. And I'm sure everything's.
Mangled.
Yeah, mingled, so I mean, I I can't even imagine what the what we're about to face with this.
And that's why um we've been doing this, it's for education prepa- in preparation for January when we have to enforce this.
Has got any any additional interest um at the at the uh affairs, at the um signature events yet?
Yes, we do have uh people that know about it, people that have no clue, but are willing to take the compost pill and practice. Recycling.
I ask, aside from the signature events, are there other community events that maybe like school board meetings or um. Association meetings like uh you have Rotary that meets here in Imperial frequently, just with different um.
Um I have not, I am usually the one out there, um as you know, I was out for a couple of months, so I have not been doing it. Um however, Sylvia uh from Republic Services, um she, we will be going out to the schools and starting with them, so. And that's a big contributor to organic waste.
I think if you go like to the PTA meetings or PTG meetings, as um. As was suggested, and even like at the service clubs, um that could help to spread it, just a suggestion. I know you're one person and you're being spread thinner than jam on a fo- ten-foot loaf of bread, okay? But uh that's a way to get it to, so the people can hear about it. Uh this is gonna be a training process and um I know you say one time uh warning. But I think you might have, uh gosh, what is it? The uh Beauty and the Beast where the city folks are storming the castle. Coming with their torches, remember that, Walt Disney program? Yeah, so. Need to get the word out.
I think that's more because it's a lifestyle change. Correct. It is gonna take time for people to understand the change as well. And and as you know, uh you know, as far as local government, you're gonna start hearing the complaints once people start getting written notices. And you're gonna start getting all the calls and then that's when all the questions are gonna come, what do you guys do to inform us? But that's why it's good to document everything you're doing also, um so that way you can share those opportunities that you provided. As far as education, but it's good to understanding, uh you have limitations and time is limited as well. Um but yeah, as much as possible.
And you guys will be the the dark one.
And we're gonna fill up those seats here in the next couple of months.
That's why the compost piles make it easier, you just set them in your kitchen and as you're cooking, you just deposit them in there.
It's a good reminder.
Correct.
Our our best, our best bet down the road is is you starting and getting out there in the in the schools. And getting the kids to to start to get in that habit. Um the your the biggest struggle obviously with with, you know, the heads of the households. Um but with the kids, I mean, it it worked in the nineties and the eighties, getting kids to separate plastic and aluminum and whatnot and. You know, at least we we recognize that. Um but yeah, it's, we're we're gonna fill up those seats here in the next ten months, I'm afraid.
Nation.
Yeah, thank you.
Very helpful.
Wish you the best and all of that, I mean, it's gonna be a a big thing.
Big overtaking, undertaking. Moving on to item E, new business, uh discussion, action, uh E one. Similar land use determination for a recycling facility within the general industrial zone. And I'll um open the public hearing, seven oh five.
It is not a public hearing. Um so Mister Jose Moises Carballo submitted an application for a for connection recycling, his business. Uh proposed to be located at five oh four Industry Way. Upon staff's initial application review, recycling facilities are not listed as a permitted land use within the general industrial zone. Staff recommends that planning commission determines the recycling facility's use be permitted as a similar land use under the manufacturing. Classification within the city of Imperial's general industrial zones permitted land uses. As it lists the compound compounding, assembly, or treatment of articles or merchandise for glass or metals and plastics. Um Mister Carballo is here, if you have any questions regarding his business or what he intends to do.
A good evening. We're coming, is there anything that you'd like to add to what staff has already described in regards to?
Uh it's a new place, I mean, um I was looking through uh a specific space between. Central City and Imperial City, cuz I know Imperial City has only one recycle center by the gas station. I don't know the street, and the the other one is located by one eleven, that I used to work for them for six years. So people that doesn't have cars, they struggle to travel all the way over there or all the way to the Imperial City. Uh and the location that we found is, I think, is some little bit, you know, accessible for. People that has no vehicles or, you know, like residential areas are more near the area. And which only will gonna be recycling beverage containers. There's a, it's not a lot of money uh doing recycling, but it's some. Constant money that goes, you know, well, it's gonna be a, we're gonna do the recycling and and. By industry way and everything's gonna be taken out to SA recycling, which they have a processor license. So they will pay back the money to us and then we're gonna keep uh recycling. Um public recycling and we can offer also to schools, uh business restaurants. Anyone who handles, let let's say, um even bars, you know, glass. Uh we can deliver some containers and pick up the containers segregated by ourselves. And give the school or the business some money back.
Well, um the city has the blue container, okay? And in that blue container goes the recyclables, right? Okay, and I understood that, I'm just talking from a residential standpoint. That helps to offset some of the charge that shows up on my monthly bill. For trash sewer and water. So if people take it, don't don't put it in the blue trash can. And they take it to you, is it gonna end end up increasing our rates? Does the recyc- does the trash people give some kind of uh consideration for getting recyclables? And the overall rate they charge the city, so it passes down to residents?
As I recall, our our contract does not have a specific formula associated with that. Uh so to the extent there are recyclables and that the and the trash company can recover those. Um uh that that might well factor in when it comes time for rates, but there isn't a specific formula, so. Yeah, so um uh uh tha- that, there isn't a specific um uh way to calculate. How much the rate might go up or down.
They're figuring out when they contract with the city.
I'm sorry?
It's not specified line item when the contract is negotiated or presented to the city.
It it has not been to uh to my knowledge.
That that's what I understood, that there is some kind of offset there, so. Let's get El Centro, let's bring their stuff to your business, so it doesn't affect Imperial. That's I'm saying, that's a possibility, okay? This from your business model, okay? Okay, the second question I have is, Industry Way, that's right off of Imperial. Is it right on the way to FedEx or is it the first street in that industrial center?
It's next to um.
Who's your neighbors?
The neighbor will be uh the heavy heaters, I think, or some CrossFit Center?
That's CrossFit, um it's down from the Immigration Court, down from the um some of those federal buildings down there, um.
That's La Boucherie.
Uh La Boucherie and uh and Ayton are the main streets in in that area.
Right, and therefore you're going south on, you're going north on La Boucherie and you turn off on Industry Way?
And and then at the end is the bottle company.
Which, what company?
Humex, uh it's at the end of the corner. Uh oh yeah, Lori.
Cuz I'm looking at your picture that's in here, I'm just trying to get familiar with.
But next to us is is an um um oil company, I think.
Okay.
Something related to gasoline or oil.
Right, I see. So uh you're gonna keep it clean, like there's not gonna be flying. Apers or whatever when the wind kicks up?
Other than uh, I used to work for SA Recycling for six years and we never get a violation or nothing. When I wa- I was in charge of the warehouse where we received the all the product. So um we're not gonna buy anything like batteries or oil, nothing that contains. Gas hazardous materials, we're only gonna focus on beverage containers and that's it. Only glass, plastic, and aluminum.
And aluminum cardboard?
No, no, that will be a, we will, we'll be require a lot of space or special equipment to compact and make bales. So and it's a fire hazard also.
So you were the, you were the manager over there at the SA?
The warehouse manager.
You were their warehouse manager? And now here, you're the owner?
The owner.
Owner, okay, um she already hit on on my question, my question was, uh how long? You intend to store this stuff there? Uh I see here, uh it's it, it does point out, how long do you intend to?
For the material?
Yeah.
It's good, it will be um only Sunday, cuz uh. Uh the plan is just get as much material we can on one day and resell it back the same day. So there will be no material accumulation in that warehouse.
Doing a twenty-four hour turnaround?
Yeah, except for the glass, the glass we can store, cuz I mean, the glass, we will have a a metal bins containers. Uh which not a people have too much glass, it's just a few bottles. So that one may ta- take longer to, you know, to s- to resell it. But um besides plastic and aluminum, that will be a daily uh uh resale.
Long do you guys, how long do you intend, how high do you intend to stack this stuff?
The floor level.
Floor level?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um and everything else is plastic, you turn it around within twenty-four hours. Uh who oversees this? Is this a county thing? Anybody come check this out? I mean, uh besides a violation of some sort?
Well, uh I already have the uh car recycle license to get it uh to get it started. I just need the plates and. And besides that, I mean, I know the the county Imperial, it is, you know, the Department of Weight and Measure, they have to respect the the scale. But mostly, we're, we're ready.
All the right answers, I'm just putting it on the record that.
We can write it tomorrow.
You got it all, you got it all dialed in and um, yeah, I'd rather have him have another business in uh. In Imperial than send it to, send you to El Centro, so.
And it's good, I mean, El El Centro, uh it's a big city, but uh Imperial, it it's between those cities, sorry.
Got you right here.
Yeah.
You already here.
Um, why El Centro? I mean, Imperial's better.
So besides yourself, how many people you gonna have uh working for you? I'm not committing you to hire, but maybe I have a goal.
Uh we're gonna start with a crew, I think, uh of three people and myself, I'm not including as as, you know, as employee. But I will be uh training them and teaching them how to uh weigh the materials. Um most important, how to teach the customers how to how to be ready to sort, to have the materials already sorted. Um so it's gonna be uh three people, the cashier, a weight master, and a labor and and me. Uh, yeah.
How big are the vehicles that you intend to move your your material in and out? Was it pickup or small?
It's a, it's a Chevy Silverado, radar cab, just with a trailer. Um not big, sixteen feet trailer.
I don't need, I'm satisfied. Answered everything.
Not a public hearing, so we're. We're still. Uh I'll motion to approve to adopt the resolution, a PC twenty twenty-three dash ten.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Um and before I call roll call, I I I neglected to indicate that uh Commissioner Abadi entered the meeting at six forty. And before this matter was called, and so uh roll call on on the motion, Commissioner Abadi?
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Tarazas Baxter, Vice Chairperson Rivera, yes, and Chairperson.
It's not working?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero and um do we close the planning commission to move on to traffic? Alright, so I'm adjourning the meeting, I'm adjourning, I'm going to adjourn the planning commission meeting at seven eighteen PM. And uh we will continue with the uh traffic commission meeting at seven eighteen PM. The for uh the item for review is uh F one removal of pedestrian crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue. Between Barione Boulevard and Ninth Street.
Hello commissioners, my name is Carla, I'm with Community Development Department. Um so an evaluation of the crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue between Barione Boulevard and Ninth Street. Has been requested to formulate possible mitigation measures regarding the rising safety concerns for pedestrians using the designated crosswalk. The ideal mitigation is the removal of existing crosswalk in its entirety. The existing pedestrian crosswalk presents many safety apprehensions, the placement of the pedestrian crosswalk has visibility concerns. There is a major blind spot when vehicles in the parking spots directly in front of Key's Bargain on the west side of Imperial Avenue. For drivers moving southbound, the pedestrian is not visible to drivers until they are approximately twenty feet into the crosswalk. The Development Review Committee. The Development Review Committee has assessed the crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue. And based on the concerns expressed, the removal of the crosswalk on North Imperial between Barioni Boulevard and Ninth Street. May provide and fulfill the sought-after traffic safety mitigation. You can refer to Exhibit A for additional feedback from the surrounding businesses. The Development Review Committee has based the recommendation on the following guidelines from the manual. Of Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices, otherwise known as M U T C D. Um you can review section S B point one eight. Um labeled crosswalks mark, crosswalk markings of the M U T C D. And it states the following, crosswalk markings provide guidelines for pedestrians who are crossing roadways by defining and def. Delineating paths on approaches. To and within signalized intersections on approaches to other intersections where traffic stops. So staff findings are as follows, the M U T C, M U T C defines crosswalk markings to provide guidance for pedestrians. Who are crossing the roadways and based on field observations, there are definite safety and visibility concerns. At the pedestrian crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue between Barioni Boulevard and Ninth Street. The mitigation measures, options and costs, the removal of the existing striping is one thousand dollars. Area improvements, so there would be no parking signs. Or fifty feet red curb removal of three parking spaces, that would be two thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. Rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the pedestrian crosswalk system would be about seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um as well as two ADA ramps for a total of thirteen thousand dollars. Staff recommendation is based on the findings, we recommend the removal. Of the crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue between Barioni Boulevard and Ninth Street.
Question? So we're gonna get rid of the stripes and we're gonna go and spend.
Uh to remove, to to so you have two options, the option one? Correct.
So we're gonna say, get rid of, okay, so we're just totally gonna get rid of the stripes and we're not gonna put in the ADA all like that because if we did get rid of it. We'd have to go and spend thirty plus thousand dollars.
That is correct, that that amount. Not only the cost, but also uh we'll be removing three parking spaces.
And people don't want that.
That is correct. Um I just wanna point out at least some reasoning behind this, um I don't think we have anything. We're not drawing anything from. The east side of that street to the left side of the street. We used to have a post office, so then, you know, we had foot traffic. At this point, we don't really host anything there, everybody drives up to the seventy-six, to the convenience store, whatever. Seventy-six, right? So there's really no need for it, uh in my, in my. Consideration of this is uh, I mean, if we were drawing businesses, if we 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 were drawing lots of foot traffic there, then I would say, yeah, well. You know what, let's invest into that part of town and we add. This investment, everything, the the ADA ramps and and uh the lights and 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 the bells and whistles. Uh but in this case, I mean. Um there's, there's nothing there yet. I I I I stand with the recommendation that's remove the striping um and we'll cross that. Crossing later on down the road, you know, when we have something to offer. Um and justifies spending thirty-three thousand dollars, I mean, I think at this point, just cut our losses and remove the striping. And and I mean generally, I mean it, yeah, it it's an inconvenience for the for the shop owners, for the employees that park across the street. Um but then at the same time, you know, they also note that they're losing parking spots, so. It's it's one or the other, and in this case, for the city, for the overall. City, um I think it's best to just remove the striping.
You have to choose safety over. I think in this, because it is hard to see the pedestrians walking across the street there. I mean, me just going to check this part out, it was, someone popped out in front of me, so I can totally see why. It is, it's definitely a hazard for pedestrians. Is that bus stop that's on the other side of um the former post office still in service? I'm I'm in favor of removing that striping.
What's the distance between that crosswalk and the stoplight? Cause there's crosswalks at the stop, uh well, it's, yeah. Sorry, not stoplight, cause it's signs, right? But it's just, as you said, it's a bit inconvenient, but. It's not that far, right? We're prioritizing safety here.
I'll motion to approve um the removal of pedestrian crosswalk on North Imperial Avenue between Barioni and uh Boulevard and Ninth Street. Do I have a second?
Oh, I second that, I apologize.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarazas Baxter. Commissioner Abadi. Vice Chairperson Rivera?
Yes.
Chairman Harvey? Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to reports, we'll start with commissioners' reports, uh Commissioner Abadi?
This is just uh previous question. When are they gonna finish landscaping on Ayton Road? West of La Busherie? They planted the trees, late spring, early summer, that was it.
So if you're talking about improvements, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they they didn't finish the landscaping, they did it for um. The first, uh I I wouldn't call it a block, but between Blazing Star Trail and the next street. But after that, they planted some trees all the way. The trees are doing okay, but they didn't plant any shrubs like they did in the first section.
I don't. No, well, there are, there are plans, I can't speak to what those plans are, uh but. Once upon a time, uh I did have a conversation with parks, they have a schedule both for the improvement in between La Brujerie. Uh all the way to Ayton, if you notice on the south side of Ayton, there are areas that need some attention. Uh with respect to additional planting and there is a schedule for that, and I think some of that was gonna occur after the heat of the summer. So I think there's gonna be some additional, you've also noticed, I'm sure, that that with the rains that we had. The the grass is really uh growing. We can't, we can't get grass to grow in our parks, but they are thriving in those parks.
I think it's the the soil.
So Parks also is is addressing that, they're trying to find a way to s- stay ahead of all all of that, so. Um Ayton is certainly on uh uh their agenda to to uh pay some attention to it. Both with respect to new planning and maintaining uh and getting rid of uh the grass that's there. I'll make a note to uh get the schedule that uh Mister Lopez had previously provided me and make sure that you all get that.
Commissioner Tarazas?
Uh no reports, I'm sad I missed out on the state of the city over the weekend, I apologize, I couldn't go, uh my daughter had a performance that I. Needed to support, but I I heard great things, glad to hear it all went well and so look forward to you guys' next signature event as well.
Vice Chair Rivera?
Yeah, how are we coming along with the uh the tearing down of the 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 remnants? Of that abandoned some division over there on uh La Brujerie between Ayton and Joshua Tree?
De La Fuente?
Yeah, De La Fuente, thank you.
Um it's moving slowly but surely.
That's gonna be all the way down to to dirt again.
Yeah, the the goal and the requirement is to make a difference, whether that be to complete it or to get it done. And so it is a slightly long legal process, but we are diligently working on it to accomplish either of. Councils working with the city manager's office, um and city attorney, oh yeah. Yeah, yeah, through, then we're working through um our administrative process and legal process to get that accomplished. There's a few different owners, but we've we've started it and those offices working hard on it as well, so.
There's like a monitoring, so we don't have the people, the street people taking up residence now the weather's cooler. And we can have another fire.
Yes, we have court enforcement uh doing.
Checking trash cans, they can stop by there.
Yeah, the uh maybe you you drive by the at least three homes, the that were on fire, they're they're down now. Um they're working on the south side of of uh that that street, so uh it's moving.
Did you guys have a check?
They they were now, um they demoed the roof on one, um so they're moving towards towards the west.
I'm just, I'm just asking, it's it's been seventeen months since we last talked about that, and that was before the fire. And I just want the refresher on the on on all the, all the hands that were involved in doing that. And again, now with the signature events, I just wanna be ready for the questions that'll come and put it on record. Um I do like the uh, this happened some time ago, I had not said anything about it, um the fencing on along La Brujerie and threshold. That's the uh privacy slot, the replacement for the brick wall we have back over there. Headed towards the um.
Uh the fencing for the retention?
Yeah, for the retention over there.
So that project is.
Yeah, it's it's done, but I really like the way, I I like the way it, the finished product was. Yes, I'm complimenting.
I I passed, I passed by there every day.
That's what happens with local government, we're not used to compliments, so.
There just had to be a but.
There was no but, if if the only thing I bring today is is a a applause, a pat on the back, then so be it, but that's what that was. Uh what is, what is the next signature event? Do we have it in November or is it until December? We have it until December. Okay, we did have a fantastic turnout for for this weekend, it was elbow to elbow. So and do we give out more of the the compost buckets?
About eighty-five?
How many more do we have?
We bought six hundred, so I believe we have about. Three hundred left.
Can we just? Little flyers? Uh I see, I see, I'm I'm trying to push the the project too, I'm I'm trying, I feel so bad for you guys, yeah. Whatever it takes is um and um. That's all I got, the only thing is uh for everybody, uh last. High school football game for the Imperial Tigers against Southwest. Uh not to be overshadowed, um I know, cause everybody's look, talking about bell games and stuff. But don't forget the the boys out on the field for the for the Imperial, the pride of Imperial, their high school football players. Good luck against uh Southwest, um that's all I have for tonight. It's Friday.
For me again, just another compliment for the signature event this weekend, that was really well, um. You know, a lot of, a lot of people showing up, especially for the state of the city with ma- the mayor, I saw a lot of uh. Uh people there from the County Board of Supervisors and other councils from across the county and commission, so it was nice to see all that support for her. And for our city there and uh that's what I have for tonight. What about staff?
Eric, you have a meeting, your regular meeting occurs the day before Thanksgiving? And so there was, there we. We, there may, at this point, we're not sure whether or not we're gonna have an item or not. Uh but we'll plan accordingly if if you're pretty sure at this point that we won't have a quorum the day before Thanksgiving. So we wanted to make that inquiry, you know, a lot of people travel before Thanksgiving. So i- if if you if you know. You know, uh Commissioner Winkler's not here, but if you know you're gonna be out of town, we and we we may not have a quorum, then we would. Plan accordingly, but if you think you're gonna be here, we'll be here.
I would like to suggest to plan on not having a meeting then, okay, just push it over because some people travel. The day before and they're exhausted preparing the goodies for the next day.
Okay, also, uh from a staff standpoint, the this state of the city was seemingly very well received. It should be up on our website, so for those folks who missed it, uh within the next few days, it should be available to view. Uh on our website or social media platforms. Um one of the things to think about for some upcoming meetings is is I. Would like to, as part of your regular meetings, have a few sessions to uh either. Uh uh refresh uh with respect to uh um Brown Act. And things like that, pu- the public hearings, uh uh. And things like that, so uh you might, you should expect to see a few minutes as part of your regular meetings as we go forward. Some discussion about that, uh so if there is anything in particular that you would like to see as part of that. You should feel free to let us know.
Okay, we would send that directly to to you?
That'd be fine. Uh that's that's all I have, thank you.
That being said, I'd like to adjourn this planning commission meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, November eighth at six thirty P M.